Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting. No order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just make a note that Kerry and Dave are out tonight. All business, we'll start with the approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of June 2, 2022 are attached. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 2, 2022 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call and roll.
Mr. Spudnikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beulah?
Do I get to vote?
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? See no takers? Presentations, Clearwater Fiber. Kayla, you're gonna give us a presentation tonight? Please come up.
Well, thank you for having us. I'm Kayla Maxfield. I'm Market Development Manager for Clearwave Fiber. I can get louder, though. Oh, there we go. Okay. And Stormy Suprin is a Vice President of Kansas. So we're gonna be here to give you a little quick presentation, and then if you have any questions or anything for us, we're happy to answer those. Appreciate your time this evening. Thank you very much. Not sure how versed you all have been with Clearwave Fiber, but we are a telecommunications company. We recently purchased the assets. Let's see if I can run this. Arrow by me?
There he goes.
Oh, there we go. Oh, okay, great. Do you want to? I can give you like a signal and I'm ready. Okay, I like that. Yes, okay. And so I'm not sure if you're all familiar with RG Fiber. We recently purchased the assets of RG Fiber. So Clearwave, we are a telecommunications company focused on bringing a fiber to the home, fiber to the premise, internet connection for both business and residential customers. We are looking to expand our footprint, and as we did take over the RG network, it made a lot of sense, and we're gonna continue to fulfill our obligations to the city of Lansing. So we're really excited to get things going here in Lansing. Thank you. So Clearwave Fiber is a 100% all-fiber network. That is something different than what a lot of companies do. They will say they have fiber in their network, but it's not a complete all, you know, complete-to-the-home or business fiber network. And what that does is allow, you know, low latency, same download and upload speeds, reliability and consistency, which is really important. And as we have found, I'm sure many of you have found, after the pandemic, we realized that a good broadband connection is more important now than it has ever been. So. So Hargrave, or Clearwave Fiber was actually formed early this year in 2022. While it is a newly-formed company, we are not a newly-formed group. We have 410 colleagues. Stormy has built several fiber-to-the-premise networks before. So our management team and our leadership team has over, you know, 130 years of telecom experience in building a fiber-to-the-premise network. Great. Current areas we serve, I apologize, I don't have the Kansas market on here yet. We're still working on getting that map. But some of the footprint from the Clearwave Communications and the Hargrave Fiber have us in the southwest and Midwest region. So we're in 21 different states. And really, what we, what our goal is, is to provide a local, customer-centric, good-quality internet connection and good service for people, for the community. We plan to partner with the community. We'll be involved in local schools, chamber commerce, all of those things, and really a partnership along the, along the way. So. A little bit more about the network. 100% all-fiber network. We love to say that because there's only about 15% of homes in the United States right now that have an all-fiber network, or communities, not homes. 15% of communities. So Lansing will really be at the top of that forefront once the build is complete. And then just some of the differences in fiber versus a DSL or a copper connection. Like I said, it does provide that same download and upload speed. We're able to offer speeds that are unmatched compared to other forms of transportation essentially, because we are using that brand-new fiber-optic speed-of-light technology. Also, some interesting statistics. Gigabit internet can increase a home's value by 3.1%. Reloaders love us because we help them sell homes if it's a fiber-ready home. Also, I am speaking more residential, but on a business side, having a good fiber connection and a network that's already in place really can give you a competitive edge when it comes to attracting other businesses into the community and so forth. So that's one of the first things that they usually ask. And then, like I had mentioned earlier, you know, we do plan to have community support, have that presence. Our main office will be in Gardner, Kansas, so not very far at all. We will offer residential internet only, and then commercial internet and commercial voice. There will be no TV. We've seen the way the world has gone. Most people stream anyway. If you have a good quality internet connection, you can, you can watch your shows on the internet anyway. So. And that's a quick little, quick little rundown. I thought you guys would have plenty of questions, so that's just kind of a, a quick fix. So I am ready, and I brought the brains with me, so he'll be able to answer the, the important stuff. No pressure, Stormy. Yeah.
What is the status of installation?
Good question. So we plan to have a shovel on the ground in weeks.
Fifty-two weeks, or three weeks, or?
One week?
Very soon.
June 27 is the scheduled date right now. I don't know, the Humane Society, we have our laid-on here at the Humane Society, and I don't know if you've driven by there, but if I don't get that materials in the ground, I've got a lot of wasted inventory.
Right. I've seen it building up.
Yeah, it's, after filling up, we've got five crews that are scheduled to be in here in two weeks. So you will see activity. We got our first floors for what we call FDA areas zoned and permitted. So we already issued permits to us, so we are, we're ready to build.
Okay. Thanks.
You're getting, you're getting in trouble because you're not speaking in the mic. Come up and say your name and where you live.
I'm not a big microphone guy.
Now, those spools are actually the conduit that your wire's gonna run in, right?
The orange spools?
Right.
Correct.
When is the fiber gonna go into the conduit?
As we, as we put the duct in the ground, the empty conduit, the fiber goes in right behind it. The duct is just there to protect the fiber fundamentally, and we put trace wire in with it so we can locate it.
So you're gonna be putting it in, in the easement, in the front of the house, in front of the roads, is where you're gonna follow?
Correct.
Hey, sir, can you come up here?
Sorry. Can I take it to him?
It's gonna be recorded, and the citizens may not hear.
Be up there for the camera.
Oh, look at, you're gonna be on camera, too. He's thrilled, right?
So you're gonna follow the easement in front of the house, along the street. You're gonna have some, what, drop boxes from the house?
Yes, we'll put, we'll put a handhold. We call them handholds in the ground. And in, in those handholds will be a port for every house in the neighborhood. And then from those ports, we will bury drops to each of the individual homes. Like, this, this handhold will serve maybe these four homes behind me. Yeah, and then we'll put drops to individual.
It's like a standard utility boxes are in the neighborhood.
Standard utility boxes, right. Yeah, you know, just like this thing.
So I assume you're gonna put a box on each house like the cable company does?
Very similar. Yeah, just a little fiber entry box. It'll be a little, and what we, what we put in that fiber box is simply whatever, when we pull the fiber in, whatever extra fiber we have, we wrap around inside that box, and then we have a little entry fiber going into the home. Very similar to how coaxers ran, you know. I mean, it's a wire, right? We gotta get it in the home.
And do you have a user's pamphlet of what the homeowner needs to buy, provide, or experience when they say, "Come visit me"?
Got to come. It will be no different than, than hooking up a, a cable connection today. We'll provide a Wi-Fi router. Wi-Fi will be available in your home. If you wanna hook a, a hard-wired connection to that router, you can plug right into it. No different than what a, a cable modem box would do today. It's just as direct fiber interface.
And is that box gonna have an RG-45 connector for those of us that have cables already ran?
RG-45s, correct. In fact, it'll have four of them.
And how many IPs are you providing?
One.
What if we want more?
Then they're, they're available to purchase. If you want statics, we can static up, you know, slash 29, anything you want. If you need three IP addresses for cameras, whatever you might want, we can certainly static one up for you, and you can have cameras or whatever you want in your home for outside access.
And you've got this?
Not many of you know what that is.
And you've got some pricing along with all that? So I know how much budget?
We've got a broad range. You will see some information coming out very soon once our marketing gets their, gets their, we just got the address list put together, so your residents will start getting something on the residential side. It'll range anywhere from $65 a month all the way up to a gig for 140. So there'll be a range of options. 300 meg on the download upload, 500 meg on the download upload, or one gig.
So it's a little higher than what RG was doing, because they were doing one gig at $100?
Correct. And, I mean, they were offering 150 meg also there for a while, so the speeds start higher as well. 300 meg, you know, a family can run, you know, 12 devices on that. So. No contracts, no installation fees, no data limits, unlimited data. Doesn't matter how much you use. Some companies, they'll say, "You can start at this price, but then if your family's a heavy user, and they charge you more for data limits, or they bog down your speeds, it's gonna be the same price every single month." You don't have to worry about that.
In my house, my utilities come in on the basement level. My wife has an office on the second floor, but she works from home two days a week, three days a week, excuse me. So you, I'm sure you can't take the fiber signal up there through a cable wire, a telephone line, right? So how would you, how do you get the signal up there? Do you have to hardwire around the house?
So our, our desire in that case would be to, to put our entry box in a basement area. We could plug it in, bring the fiber into that, and then we, we would like to be able to get a Cat 5 as high in the home as we can, because Wi-Fi signals are best served pointing down. So our desire would be to get something up to that second-floor Cat 5. And if it's gotta go around the house enough, that's fine. Wherever we can find a snake through the house, it would, would be, but we wanna get that router, that, that Wi-Fi router as high as possible.
You could probably go up the outside of the house, into the attic, and then down, maybe?
Maybe, yes. Something like up through the eve, down. You know, our technicians are extremely good at, at trying to find. But it's a wire, right? It's, it's a, it's physically gotta take up space. You gotta have that access. So we can't, we can't do miracles. We can't go up, up a wall that's all sealed in. So there's, there's limitations. So.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. We really appreciate the update and look forward to breaking ground.
We're excited, too.
Be patient with us. We'll, but we will do it as cleanly as possible. We will, we will refurbish every area that, that we have to dig through. If you find an area that, that we didn't, didn't refurb as good as you'd like, please just call us. We're here to make sure this community gets the best service possible, and, and we're not here to, to create any problems for you. So if you have any issues, call me. I'm, I'm right in Gardner. I'll be right up here and, and make sure everything's taken care of.
One more question. When, when you're working in that area, do we have signs out saying that you're doing the work?
Correct.
Yes.
And we will have door hangers we're gonna put on, on all the doors around, so they'll know that we're doing constructions through the easements, and, and so that's an, and a number to call if they have, you know,
They can call you.
If we leave a hole and it sinks down or something like that, they can call. So we're gonna, we're gonna try to make it so you guys don't get calls, we get the calls.
I've got one more question, but it's for the mayor. Can he send that homeowner's information packet and the prices? Can we hang that up on our website?
When we get it, I'm sure we can hang that on our website, yes.
Absolutely. I'll work with Matt on that. Absolutely. Yeah, that's a great idea.
Well, you just missed the soft soil time of the year. Now you're about to hit the concrete.
In 100-degree heat?
118-degree heat index.
I contracted all out, so. I just suggest they drink a lot of water.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, item, item number two is Ordinance 1083. Ordinance 1083 adopts the updated fee schedule for service charges and fees for various departments. Attachment A, which was in your packet, summarizes the schedule. To implement the changes, a new fee schedule must be adopted by an ordinance. So some of the highlighted changes under administration was an increase to the notary stamp fee to $15 per stamp. Updated the fee for the electronic documents slash video on a USB, to $25 per USB. This would also remove the video copies on discs, since this is a media that is really no longer used. And then instituting a fee for re-inspections at $75. With the community center, they removed the napkins, tablecloths, and table skirts, which are no longer available to the public. Under finance, increased residential refuse collection service charges, waste, under waste management, when they increase their fees. This is not an additional increase. This is the increase that came with the contract that we awarded back in February, I believe. So this, this is not a new one. We're just putting it in the ordinance. So I need a motion to adopt Ordinance 1083, updating the fee schedule for service change, charges, and fees for various departments.
Go move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like a little clarification on the reinspection fee. Our city inspector, you know, somebody's building a house, and he's gotta go out and look at the foundation before they start building the floors or whatever. I'm, I'm kinda confused of what reinspection's all about.
So this would be a situation where the inspector goes out and looks at it, and it fails, and then he goes back out again, and he looks at it, and it fails, and then he has to go back out again. That's when we would start charging the fee. It's, it's there so that when we have somebody who continually calls and fails inspections, we can try to recoup some of the cost of that inspector going out there multiple times. It's, it's really, we're seeing it a lot more on roofs than we are on anything else.
On what?
Roofs. When roofs are replaced. These guys, they will call in for an inspection, and then it rains, and they don't bother to call us. They don't tell us anything. Our inspector goes out there, there's nobody there. They haven't even started on the house. It's not necessarily just when it rains, even when it's good weather. We've had them go out before, and there's no one there. Materials are on the roof, but nobody has started any work, even though they called and scheduled an inspection for that day and time. So that's, that's really what it's for, is to recoup those costs. We will be, we'll be diligent with it and make sure that we're, you know, if somebody fails a foundation, for example, we're not gonna immediately, right off the bat, jump to charging them a fee. But if they continually blatantly do it and have no regard for our inspector's time, that's when we would start charging this fee.
Part of the issue, too, since we're working with IBTS a little bit for our inspectors, we're paying them every time they go out. So if we're paying IBTS $75 to go inspect a roof, and then the contractor isn't there, the homeowner isn't there, we've literally just flushed $75 down the toilet.
No, I understand.
So this is partially recouping those costs.
I wanted clarification. I didn't, like, in my packet, I didn't quite follow what we were trying to do here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Question I had, Mayor, was, we're not increasing any cost in the use of the community center or anything like that. So, I mean, really, that's the only changes is?
Yeah, they're just not offering the, that service anymore as part of the deal. You gotta bring your own. Yeah. You gotta bring your own.
I never saw those anyway.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I'll miss them, but they're gonna be gone.
Mayor, I got a question for you.
Yes.
On the refuge increase?
Yep.
Was that already planned, or is that because of the fuel?
That is not because of the fuel yet, but that could be an increase coming. This was solely based on the contract we negotiated this last time. So we're just putting that in there.
This is from February. Yeah. We, you approved the contract in February. Yeah, and there was a slight increase, if you'll recall, and we kinda talked about it. But at the time, we always like to do all the increases at one time, because it limits the number of calls that we get from customers. So we did the water averaging this last month. We increased the trash fee then, instead of back in February. So.
I just missed that. That's why I wanted clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Nope, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Spudnikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beulah?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number three is Buxton Economic Development Package, ARPA funds. So one of the goals this year in attendance at the International Council of Shopping Centers, ICSC, in Las Vegas, was to look for an economic development support company to replace the support previously provided by Retail Coach, as that contract has ended. While at ICSC, the mayor, city administrator, and CED director met with Buxton to see what services they could provide the city of Lansing for economic development support, Buxton provided a thorough overview of their services during the meeting and then during a follow-up Zoom meeting on June 3. They showed examples of the data and, and reports that they could, or that were more specific to Lansing. Staff was very pleased with the amount, with the amount and relevance of the data, and feels that this would be a great addition to our toolkit and economic development efforts moving forward. Additionally, during our discussions with Buxton, we were informed that their servicers were eligible for funding under the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. So you were provided additional information regarding their eligibility for that in your packet. And staff feels that this would be an excellent use of ARPA funds to assist economic development, analysis, and retention, attraction of businesses for Lansing. So under policy considerations, because the data that Buxton provides is proprietary in nature, and there are no, and there are not others in the market who can provide this type of data, they would meet the requirements of the purchasing policy as a sole-source vendor, and staff is recommending that we enter a contract for support of their services. So with that, I need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Buxton for a 365-day term at a cost of $35,000 to be funded by monies received from ARPA.
Go move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
When does that 365 days start?
I believe it would be tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Just whenever the, yeah, whenever the contract's ready, but.
Yeah, it takes, Buxton has told us it'll take them about 30 minutes to turn this on for us.
Okay, cool.
So once the mayor signs it, that'll start that term.
All right, thank you.
What kind of companies have they been successful with, or franchise businesses, or anything?
So they don't attract businesses. They provide data for us to go out and attract businesses. So, but the companies they work with, if you can think of it, they've probably worked with them. They're a major player in the game in that regard, as far as data and analytics. They're similar, I don't know if you've ever heard of Place Your AI, but they're similar to them in terms of data. However, their data is much more specific to mobile phone use. That's where the majority of their stuff comes from. So we can actually drop a pin somewhere and see how many people are probably gonna visit that, based on how many people have been there over the past six months, year, whatever term you wanna use. We could also run some analytics on empty ground and figure out if there's certain vendors we should, or franchises that we should go after, because that area is one that they, you know, their data supports them locating there.
We had something like this before, didn't we?
Not directly. The Retail Coach had some data that they would use for this, but it wasn't as robust as what Buxton has.
Yeah.
This wouldn't replace that Retail Coach we're using, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, our, our other contract has run out. So we're looking for somebody else.
I don't wanna pay both of them, you know?
No, we're not gonna pay both of them.
No. Buxton's more of a, I mean, they're gonna give us the data. We need to approach folks that we have linked up with versus, you know, Retail Coach gave you some data, but they're trying to connect you with people, and then?
Well, and the other thing, too, I don't wanna knock the Retail Coach, so to speak, but a lot of their data is set up on the older method of thinking, where they run a one-mile ring, a three-mile ring, a five-mile ring, a 10-mile ring, and then they give you demographics in those rings. That doesn't tell the whole story, because we, as a population, don't necessarily stay within those one, three, five, and 10-mile rings. So we wanna be able to see who's coming to Lansing, where they're coming from, and this, this company is, they can provide that for us.
One thing that I would add to, Matt and I were speaking with a company, and we had said, you know, "Talk to us about your experiences with the Retail Coach." And kinda scratched their head, and they didn't, they didn't have a lot to say. And then we had said, "Well, we'll talk to us about Buxton." And right off the bat, this company that's not affiliated with them at all is saying, "Oh, yeah, a lot of retailers use these guys to figure out if they meet market demands, if they have the certain amount of customers in the area, the income in the area, the traffic in the area, things like that." So it, it was, it was telling to me when we had met with that person. Third-party, no affiliation, right off the bat, he was, yes, companies use Buxton.
That was a local broker based out of Kansas City. So.
If I hear you right, Tim, this is data that we can use to substantiate talking to people, come to our area. Here's the data that supports you coming.
And so when, when he was doing the demo with me and Matt, one of the things that was interesting, say it's a, he ran a couple of examples. One was a business that residents in Lansing always bring up to Matt and I. And he was, he was able to run it based on Lansing's population, Lansing's income, all of this stuff. And I think it was like our income looked great. Our demographics were great. But our population was, would have caused that restaurant to pause, to come to Lansing. So, yeah.
Regardless of the traffic that goes back and forth through it.
Well, it takes, right, it takes that traffic into account.
But, but I think.
Still didn't justify.
Yeah.
But I, I guess just in that example, though, and I think it was like a, a red light, yellow light, green light system. You know, if you have two green lights and one red light, maybe that overcompensates for that red light. But anyway, that was, that was one example of a company that we hear about from people pretty regularly. And they were able to run those demographics for me and Matt to show us, maybe the type of odds we would have to land a company.
So can we use this information in cooperation with the LCDC?
We could potentially if they were attracting, it depends on what type of business it is they're trying to attract and whether or not they have that data.
Might as well redo some of that investment with them, make them earn it.
We could potentially.
Where you're going with that, too, though, I mean, existing businesses in Lansing can use this. And, you know, this could be a great tool for, for current restaurants, you know, Lansing Lumber, whoever. This could be a great tool for existing businesses in Lansing.
It would help them tremendously with marketing, for example, because they'd be able to look and see where their customer base is coming from, and then they can target, market those areas, you know, to try to help drive more, you know, bring those same customers, or potentially even drive more from that same area. So.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Spudnikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beulah?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is executive session for land acquisition. I need a motion to enter executive session. The preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 75-4319 Bravo 6 for a period of 30 minutes. For a period of 30 minutes to open the meeting at, what time is it?
7:28.
What's that?
7:28.
7:28? We don't even have one on here. So 7:58? I'll just wait till it hits 58. Yeah. Return it, uh, open at 7:58, and, open now, and return at 7:58.
Go move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Spudnikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Beulah?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to return open session.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Spudnikah?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Beulah?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, department heads, anything? Oh, okay. City attorney?
Nothing, except I'm not liking this weather, man.
Noted.
From a guy who works inside.
Yeah, exactly.
City administrator?
I have nothing.
All right, we'll go around the horn. Don?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Gene?
Well, no, other than that, I see, I guess Steve's gone, but, you know, our condolences to Steve's family on the loss of his father, who was buried yesterday. He was as great a guy as his mother was a lady. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Marcus?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about the cable brief today and start getting this 5G, and I'm ready to get busy with it. But the library and the summer reading program, pretty exciting. Way to go. Excited for you. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Granddaughters are loving that. Jesse?
Yeah, I did what Gene said about Steve's dad. He has our condolences. Very sad. Do we need to revisit? Do we need to revisit our code enforcement on lawn mowing?
Like Popeye's?
Yeah, thank you. I won't go calling anybody's name, but you know what I'm saying.
It's mowed.
I know it's mowed, but, but it's ridiculous that it took that long.
So, it takes, yeah, the way our code enforcement stuff is set up, I'm going kind of off memory on the height requirement, but once it hits a certain height, I think it's 12 inches. We issue them a certified letter at that point, and they have 10 days from that point to mow it.
12 inches is pretty tall. Can we change that to six?
We could certainly look at other cities, what other cities have their set at, and see if there's a reason, you know, if it makes sense to change it. You don't have to do what other cities are doing. You can do it however you want, of course. But generally, it's easier to enforce if it's more in line with what everybody else is.
Some people make a comment about Burger King being a sore because it's out of business. Well, that's, this is bad. I mean, that's just bad, have that business next door. Especially with, with Arby's doing all the renovation that they did.
Yeah, they spent a lot of money.
Neighbor right there.
Yep.
As terrible as it was, too, thankfully, we, we got it mowed today, but since the next time would be the second time, we only have to wait three, three days the next time, right?
When do we get to bring them to court? That's what I want, when I'm serious.
Well, since we evaded it, we're going to bill them, and if they don't pay, it goes on their property taxes.
Right.
We have a national chain restaurant. There's no reason for that to get like.
I've reached out to their national manager about it.
Did they mow it, or did we mow it?
We, our contractor.
We mow it, and then we bill them.
Right.
Okay, I understand. I just.
Yep.
I definitely want to revisit that in the work session now.
We can look at that. We need to make, we, I was going through some stuff earlier this week. We still have those fence provisions that we need to do, too. So, maybe we can put both those together and do it.
I'm talking about residential, not just commercial.
Sure. Yeah. Well, I think, I don't think our code right now makes a designation between residential and commercial. I think it treats it all the same.
We've got.
So, maybe that's, that may be something to discuss, too. You may want a higher one for residential and a lower one for commercial, so that we don't have commercial properties getting that high, but residences, we don't necessarily, aren't as worried about. I don't know. There's a lot of things to think about there.
Three issues that I know of.
We need to have a discussion.